Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as Board President of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular Board Meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our Board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on the agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda Board Workshop. As a member of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our Board Team on an item on our action agenda or an action item not on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to discuss on a public comment form located in the back of the room should you want to speak on an issue not on our agenda this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified of when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out, and any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to District Administration for information about that process. If you have a pending grievance, you will not be permitted to speak about that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the Board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments, and since the matter has not been posted for discussion, we will not be able to give any other response. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recordings will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also remind my fellow Board members and all of you in the audience to please turn off or silence your cellphones. Thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. With that being said, we have a quorum. All of our Board Team is here this evening, and we will move forward with the invocation. Cody Turner, who's the family pastor at Paul Anne Baptist Church, is here tonight to give us our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, let's pray. Father, I am joyed to be able to partner in with the Board in this moment, this meeting, and Lord be our representative to you. Lord, I'm grateful to you for the welcome that I received even coming into this space. There's significant difference in being present in a place and being welcome in a place, and so, God, that's how we feel about you. Lord, we know that you are here. God, Lord, you're welcome here. And so, with that, Lord, we petition you, God. Just pray your blessings over this Board and this team. We pray your blessings on the agenda that is set forth, Lord, that needs to be spoken over, considered. We pray your blessings over the families and the kids that this Board represents. And, God, where wisdom is necessary, God, you tell us to ask for it, and you'll give it. So, Lord, we do. We ask for your wisdom that is needed. We ask for your clarity that might be needed. May your clarity become the clarity that is in this room. So, we submit this to you and give you thanks that you hear us when we cry out to you, God, and we do this. We love you. In the name of Jesus, we pray it. Amen.
Thank you. We also have four 5th graders here from Alto Loma. We have Mason Lopez, Xavier Mesa, Alexia Mendez, and Mariana Silva, who are all going to come here and lead us in our pleasures of allegiance to the United States and Texas. Come on forward, guys.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. All right, we are going to continue moving forward with recognitions, and Molly is actually going to do this one?
Well, I'm going to do part of this one.
Okay. So Molly is going to help us with the recognition of the National School Counseling Week and Elementary, Middle School, and High School Counselor of the Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the Board. Tonight, San Angelo ISD celebrates school counselors and the vital role they play in the lives of our students as they work to realize their hopes and dreams. Our 41 school counselors are dedicated to creating comprehensive counseling programs that are proactive, responsive, and empower all students by guiding them through times of needs and celebrating all the ways our students are smart. We are thankful for each of our counselors for being shining examples of how at SAISD our people make the difference. This recognition is just the start of the great things happening due to our SAISD counselors. So at this time, sorry, Dr. Moran, we'll have you walking up and down a little bit. Dr. Moran, if you would join us and all of our counselors present, so we have all of the members of our, most of the members of our counseling team, so if y'all would like to come up, please. We want to get a photo and we want to recognize each of these individuals. So we'll take a photo and then we'll have them come around so that they can shake each of your hands so that you can greet them. And thank you, counselors, for all you do, not only during School Counseling Week, but all year long.
It's not me. Well, we want to recognize y'all. Y'all deserve it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, how are you? How are you? Thank you. That's a good crew you got going with you.
Counselors? Oh, they don't look very good.
Hello. Hi.
You want a cookie? Okay, try it. I tried, I tried. He took my idea. He just approached another kid. Golly.
As we move forward with our final two pieces of our recognition of our counselors, I'd like to welcome Ms. Rebecca Klein, our Director of Counseling and Assessment, to the podium to complete Knight's recognition. We also want to extend our appreciation to Ms. Klein for her leadership and contribution. So, thank you.
Quite the height difference between me and Molly. Good evening, Board. I'm glad to be here tonight and share some celebrations with you. First of all, I just want to say how proud I am to recognize five of our counselors this evening who were honored at the Three Rivers Counseling Association Luncheon. They do that yearly, and all of our counselors are members of Three Rivers Counseling Association, which is under the Texas Counseling Association, and that gives them a way to network and be with other counselors. But here they are. So I want to say congratulations to, and as I call your name, you can come on up. We're going to do a photo op afterwards. The first one is Diana Taylor. Diana is at Goliad Elementary, and she received the George Plyler Elementary School Counselor of the Year. Next, we have Amber Garza of Lone Star Middle School. Amber was the recipient of the George Plyler Middle School Counselor of the Year Award. Next, we have Crystal Chapman of Central High School. Crystal is the recipient of the George Plyler High School Counselor of the Year Award. We also have Yvonne Bozenleiner from Carver Learning Center. She received the multi-level Counselor of the Year Award because we know she deals with all of our sweet students, K through 12. Last, we have Raylin Kahas. She is the administrative assistants to me. So what I want you to know about Raylin is that the counselors actually nominated her for Friend of Counseling Award because she does help support them in their role. So that's what she received. It's dedicated staff like these ladies who exemplify how our people make the difference each and every day. We are so privileged to have them on our team, and I'm just, I'm proud of y'all. And just for the record, we swept the awards this year. So...
When you got on the Board, Bill asked to move to this side, so you didn't have to get up anymore.
All right, we're going to have one more. Y'all don't get too comfy over there. Okay, so on top of the TRCA awards that were given, this is one more thing that I'm super proud of, but we are proud to recognize several of our campuses for receiving what we call the CREST Award. The CREST Award stands for Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas, and what it does is it exemplifies their work in the comprehensive counseling model. They take the Texas model and they implement it on their campus to the fullest extent they can, and then they actually apply for the award. And the TCA and the Texas School Counseling Association, they work together to basically rank campuses across the state, and we had five campuses actually get that award this year. So we have Austin Elementary, Lincoln Middle School, Lone Star Middle School, Lakeview High School, and Carver Learning Center who received the distinction this year, and a couple of them for multiple years now. So we're very proud of them. Please join us in congratulating and thanking our Austin CREST Award winners. Y'all come on up for another photo op. Lakeview High School, Stacy Riddle, Rachel Gondar, Jennifer O'Donnell, Jenny Rupert, and Principal Zach Ramirez. Let's start with y'all. So in receiving the award, they get a banner. So the cool thing about this is they get a banner that says they've received the CREST Award. If there are multiple winners, multiple year winners, then they get an extra banner, and those are proudly hung in the campuses. Congratulations. Okay, Lone Star Middle School. The Lone Star, the Lone Star Middle School counselors have earned this distinction two years in a row, I believe? Three. We're at three. I know, we are. Amber Garza, Justin McClure, Michael O'Brien, and Principal Amy LaMaster. And I want to especially thank Ms. LaMaster and all the principals here tonight for their support in helping counselors.
Are they ready? One, two, three.
Lincoln Middle School. Lincoln Middle School was our other middle school that won the award this year. Beth McCada, Erica De LaGarza, and our Principal Joe Gondar.
Two more after this one.
We also had the privilege of hearing Joe Gondar and his wife Rachel Gondar and the Lakeview team present at the TASCAS Conference. Congratulations. And then we have Austin Elementary School. Austin Elementary, this is their first year to receive the CREST Award. It's Jessica Riddle, and then we also have April Johnson, and actually Brooke Collenbach was the principal at the time that Jessica was working on her information, so congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, Carver Learning Center, Yvonne Bozenleiner and Principal Claudia Becerra. Their work with our Carver students shines through with everything you guys do.
Y'all ready? One, two, three. Perfect. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
And next year, we're going to hope for eight. How's that? We're going to go for eight. Thank you, guys. I appreciate all of you as well.
Dr. Kingman, I know that Ms. Turk started the recognition by recognizing Ms. Klein, but I just want to close again by recognizing Ms. Klein and her leadership because each year we've had additional campuses receive recognition, and that is a direct reflection of Ms. Klein and her leadership. So thank you, Ms. Klein.
Thank you all for all being here this evening. Appreciate it. Ms. Klein, Mr. Dindel and I were talking up here about how it keeps increasing every year, so you're setting the bar high. So we appreciate all the work all of y'all are doing, so thank you all. So we are going to move forward. Public comment. Jessica, anyone sign up? I don't have anything. Okay. So no one signed up for any public comment, so we're going to move on to information items. We have a construction update from Mr. Jason Henry.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. Tonight I have with me structural engineer Alan Wolfe with Park Hill, and he's going to give us his update on our major projects at Fannin and McGill. Thank you, Mr. Henry, Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, members of the Board. Thank you again for the opportunity to come visit with you guys, give you a little bit of an update at both McGill and Fannin. Things are going well out there. I was actually out this afternoon as well, and we, our team put this report together for you guys. I'll show you just a few images and just some bullet points of some of the highlights of things that are going on. Let's try this, see if I can... Perfect. All right, so basically, as you can see, if you've driven around the site at McGill, you've started to see, you see the crane out there. They're actually putting on the metal deck over the cafeteria today, and they're hoping to start on the cafet, excuse me, the kitchen either tomorrow or Thursday. So that's moving along quite well. The block there at the kitchen area on the west side is coming along very well as well. So one of the things they're really trying to push on right now is getting the metal studs done on the exterior. So for two reasons, they want to get weathered in. Being weathered in is good. We get the roof on and the weatherproofing on the walls. That means we can start doing more on the interior. The other reason is that glass is a little, is a, want to be sure we get that ordered on time. So that's basically what's going on. All the material on site, as you can see, for the roofing is ready to go. In the pictures, you're going to see some of the steel, and actually, there's a lot more in the, if I showed you pictures from this afternoon going on. But they had multiple crews working on two different sides of the building doing the metal stud work. I will compliment, the things that can be done on the inside of the building are being done. So there's a lot of ductwork starting to be hung, both at McGill and at Fannin, and they're covering all those, that exposed work with plastic so they keep the dust out of the building or out of that ductwork. So again, you can kind of see the crews there working on the inside of the building. So it's going along very well. The exterior sheathing is going up. If you've been on kind of the northwest side of McGill, you see the green sheathing that's going to go up. It'll get an air and water barrier over that, and they'll be ready to go for masonry. So any questions on McGill before I keep going, keep on moving on? Over at Fannin, again, they are going to be starting roofing later on this week, so that's a really good sign. And again, metal studs are going up, so everybody's trying to get weathered in, as we would call it. They've done about 900, 950 feet of curb, so I know one of the big things at Fannin is we need more drop-off area and more parking, and so you can kind of see the shape of that if you drive over there, and so that's really exciting. They're also doing ductwork. All the plumbing is roughed in, so making good progress there as well. So the actual, we'll have another construction meeting next week, so we'll have more updates after that for your next meeting. You can kind of see some of the pictures here. I'll kind of flip through them. The plumbing rough-in looks good, nice and straight, and we do have door frames out there, so that's another lead-out, longer lead-out, and we like to see out on-site. So it means we can get there, and you can see some of the site work there as well. So there, I think the progress is really with the weather being fairly good here, and hopefully some good windows in the next month or so that we can get this, get the building weathered in and get some paving going here pretty soon. So that's basically the update really quickly. I know that you guys have other things on the agenda, but I'd welcome any questions that you have. And again, it's wonderful to see everybody again, so...
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And I guess this weekend I was driving by McGill, and I thought, man, that looks, you know, when you actually see it, you know, you're like, wow. And then I said, well, I'm going to drive to Fannin. So I took off all the way over to Fannin, drove by there. I was very, very pleased when I saw all that. So thank you for everything. It seems to be going great, and I hope people see it, or if they haven't, drive by there and look at them because they're coming. I saw the white beam that they hung up, the sign beam. You could see it from Sherwood Way.
Yes, the topping out ceremony. That was wonderful, wasn't it?
That was a really neat, so, but thank you all.
Thank you. Well, we're excited, and we're excited about the entry, and you know, this will, I know, help towards your sustainability plan, but also we want this to be inviting and exciting plan, but also, we want this to be inviting and exciting for kids, and I think as the, it keeps going on, the community is going to see that, and we're glad to be part of it.
Any other comments, Mr. Wolfe? Thank you for driving down here. Appreciate it.
Hey, no problem. Enjoyed it. Thank you.
All right. We are going to move forward with Dr. Gomez, and she's going to do our public hearing for our 22-23 Texas Academic Performance Report. Thank you, Dr. Gomez.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, at your seats, you had a small packet as compared to the past years with the very large packet, and we briefly discussed this in our pre-agenda meeting, and we discussed the why in conserving some paper. So, the reason, you have in front of you the district information, and last week, we visited the website where all of the information can be found, not only for our district as a whole and for all of our campuses in San Angelo ISD, but also for any district in the state and any campus in the state. So, linked right here in the very first slide is simply that link on our district webpage. So, again, that is easily accessible for each of you and for any member of our community that wanted to get the information themselves. As we also discussed in the pre-agenda, this year's information does look a little different. So, as we go through this evening for the taper public hearing, typically at this time, and even on your very front page, you typically have a rating. But at this time, we have not been assigned any rating for the district or any of our campuses. Due to the current lawsuit, all of those ratings are being held, so we don't have any information that we can share. Also, it's just important to remind all of you and anyone that's tuned in and is listening, it's February of this school year, and so we're talking about data from last school year, and we have just a few months of school left. All of our staff have been hard at work, not waiting for information, but taking students where they are and working to close gaps and working to accelerate students that were already ready to learn. Part of the taper information is we do share a district's accreditation status, and San Angelo ISD was rated accredited. Also, typically at this time, we receive information on our special education determination. That is not included in this year's taper information. So, again, we're simply sharing the information that has been released for us at this time. Before I move forward, I'm going to kind of give you an executive summary because it's a lot of information that comes in the taper report. So, I tapped a couple of pages for you, and as I go forward, I'm going to give you an executive summary. So, your first tab, it's on page eight, if you'll kind of go to that very first tab. In the taper, they do all students for all grades tested, and they break down students by subpopulation. So, in an executive summary, when we start in third grade, third, fourth, fifth, all the way up to high school, and end-of-course exams. The executive summary for San Angelo ISD is in comparison from the '23 school year as compared to the '22 school year in all areas tested, so reading, language arts, math, science, and social studies. '23 compared to '22, which again, there was a change in the assessment, so you heard us over and over talking about it was not an apples-to-apples comparison because the test had changed. You will see that the district went up. So, I'll give you just a second to kind of look at those percentages. But then you will see comparisons from the column that says district to region 15. So, that's all schools in our region. And then you'll see to the state. So, while the district is happy to report that we made gains from the '23 school year as compared to the '22 school year, the district is still below region 15, and the district is still below the state average, which is below our standard of expectation as a district. So, we are committed to continuing to make growth for all students. Another piece of the taper report is to report on our bilingual students and how we are performing in that area. We've had great ongoing conversations in San Angelo ISD for our emergent bilingual students. So, if you will turn to your next tab, I believe it's on page 13, maybe? It's the next tab that you have. Again, to give you an executive summary because you're going to have the data broken down, all grades, all subject areas, you're going to see the same trend as all students. Reading, language arts, math, science, social studies, we've made gains in comparison from '23 to '22. So, I'll give you a second to compare that. In all areas for emergent bilingual students, but we are below region 15, and we are below the state, which does not meet our standard of expectation. And again, we're committed to continuous growth for all students. I know there's a lot of numbers and a lot of data there, but I just wanted to give you an executive summary highlight. I'm going to keep moving forward in the data tables to the area of attendance. You've had multiple reports throughout the year and prior years under attendance. Attendance has been a major change engine for the district this year. I do want to remind you, for the purpose of taper, it's two years back, so what's reported to you here in these data tables is '21, '22, and '20, '21. You'll see our attendance rate was 92.6%. This year, our attendance goal is 94.5%. So, just want to give you that update there. And then for other areas in the taper that are included under CCMR, this evening, prior to the board meeting and even in the highlights and recognitions, we highlighted just a small piece of what we do under CCMR with CTE. There's a whole lot more. So, when we're looking at the data tables and how we compare with our district in comparison to the region and with the state, we're super proud of our number of students that graduate with dual credit. That's a bright, shining spot for our district. We often talk about how we do with CTE, but we are working as a district to increase our percentages of industry-based certification. That's one of our areas that we're working to grow. So, we take this data and other data points that we also discuss in CBAS, and we set very specific goals. Another portion that you have for the district and every one of our campuses that come out in your taper report is your student information, your staff information, and your program information. So, when we talk staffing, when you talk student ratios, when you talk programs, all of that information is included in your taper. Under the various sections here. But the biggest difference in what does kind of change the public perspective is the fact that people are used to seeing ratings attached to this report. So, this evening was really intended to kind of give you a summary. If you have further questions after you go through it, you're welcome to contact me, to contact Ms. Huddleston, Dr. Self, Mr. Collenbach, Dr. Moran, any of us. You're also welcome to explore any of our campuses that are listed on the website, and we're happy to answer any further questions as best we can. Do you have any questions right now that I can answer?
Dr. Gomez, thank you for, we know there's work to be done. We know y'all are doing that work, and we know that this report is a little bit, we don't have anything to really look at other than some raw data, and so we appreciate you bringing that raw data to us. And we, as a board, know the work that the administration team and all our principals and teachers and counselors and everyone is doing in order to get us to the level that we, as a district, strive to be at. So, thank you all for all y'all's work.
Dr. Kingman, I did feel to mention one thing. Another vital piece to the taper report is the glossary. We know in education, we speak kind of our own language at times, kind of maybe like physicians do, not implying that, but maybe. So, also on the website is the taper glossary that further explains some of the definitions. So, not only where you can find the information, but the glossary that explains the terms.
Thank you. All right, we're going to continue to move forward with our agenda. We have consent items A through E. We have donations. We have superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year '23, '24. There were five in our pre-printed, and two more at our desk today when we got here. Minutes from the January 16th, 2024 pre-agenda workshop, and the January 22nd, 2024 regular board meeting. We also have the revision of board policy Local DC and Board Policy GKG. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through E?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through E.
I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from...
Y'all second.
From Dr. Mills.
That's a better second than you did last week.
All right. Any board questions or board comment? So, a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Dr. Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, moving forward, we have bills, accounts, and financial statements for our January 2024. Do I have a motion to approve bills, accounts, and financial statement?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
My second.
So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any board comment or questions?
Dr. Kingman, just as a point of reference, all these reports that you see here, we reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting in depth. In addition, all those reports can be found online at our website, saisd.org. And so, thank you for that.
All right. So, having no other board comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. Then we have Consider Resolution Regarding Employment and Volunteer Policies in accordance with Senate Bill 763. Dr. Gomez?
Dr. Kingman, we discussed this in great detail in the pre-agenda meeting last week. Sorry, I have a lot of papers here. And just to kind of recap, that in our current policy, GKG, chaplains can act as volunteers. So, the district didn't feel it was necessary to employ them. We just wanted them to act as volunteers, and so there was no new policy that needed to be added, just a resolution to record the vote.
All right. So, this is in response to Senate Bill 763, so we will continue to use chaplains and volunteers per district policy, and obviously, you know, we hope that no situations ever arise that where we call on our local community to volunteer and help, but we appreciate the fact that they're willing and able to volunteer and be available to help our students in times of crisis. So, any other board questions or board comment? So, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution as presented in accordance with Senate Bill 763.
I'll second.
So, a motion from myself and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any other board comment or questions?
Just that, I was reading the resolution. So, our GKG actually says any volunteer.
Correct. They would run through our regular volunteer protocol, which goes through the VIPS protocol.
Any volunteer.
Yes.
And that's why I was...
Just because the Senate bill specifically referred to chaplains. That's why we're not making any new policy. It falls under GKG, legal and local.
And does that resolution need to be read for public record, or is it okay just to approve? Okay. So, I have a motion for myself and a second from Mr. Dindel. All in favor with approving the resolution as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, Dr. Gomez, you get to stay for considering the glossary of things with PIA non-business days for 2024.
Yes, so this came about in the last legislative session as well for really defining governmental responses to public information requests, including a definition of a business day. So, now that the board adopted the calendar for the '24, '25 school year, House Bill 30, 33 defines business day as a day other than a Saturday or a Sunday, a national holiday or a state holiday. Additionally, a government body may identify no more than 10 days each calendar year that the governmental body's administrative offices were closed or operating with a minimal staffing as non-business days. So, these days do not count when counting response deadlines. So, those days were included for you. When the board adopts a calendar for the '25, '26 school year, then we would identify the days for the '25 calendar, and these would just be posted on the website and outside the communications department so that any individuals requesting a public information request would know what was included in the calendar.
And did we identify any additional, we have not...
They're included here for you, and they were sent, and they've been sent in Friday fax.
He's got a black and white copy.
I had a black and white copy, that's why I was confused.
And sorry, my, right now, in Friday fax, we sent them colored. Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah. Thank you.
So, really, it just helps because many times in public information requests, there's multiple departments that have to gather that information.
Perfect. All right. Any, other than someone looking at a black and white copy, does anyone else have any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the PIA non-business days as presented?
Move to approve the PIA non-business days as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Ms. Mizell Flint. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. All right. We have a few announcements. Dr. Moran is going to give an election update.
It's exciting.
Exciting.
Well, I think everyone is aware that early voting began today, and there's 11 days of early voting on the calendar. I pulled this information straight from the county, and you've got a copy of it at your board desk. But I think the information I'd like to say publicly to the board, you know, most elections are determined by the primary election, which is about 5 to 6% of the registered voters. If it goes to a runoff in May, about 3%. And usually, that decision influences the general election and what happens and who holds an office. So, the importance of people getting out to vote is critical. Obviously, we can't tell people how to vote, but we surely want to encourage our employees in SAISD who are registered to vote to do so. And we have 11 days of early voting, and then on March 5th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., the election day. So, this information's been sent out. Ms. Turk's done a great job of encouraging employees to get out and vote. A lot of important decisions are being made, and for those individuals that have watched the news lately or any kind of commercials or social media, you know there's a lot of mud-slinging going on. So, we want to get the vote out and let people have a voice so that the right people hold the right offices. And that is my update on the elections.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. We're going to, we also have a few other announcements. Our finance and pre-agenda workshop are on March 18th, 2024, 5:45. Our regular board meeting is on March 25th, 2024, 5:45. And then, do we need to go into executive session?
I have no executive session issues, unless you all would like to.
I don't have anything. All right. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned.